Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gorski, roll call. Mr. Braverman. Mr. Chiarella, here. Mr. Klein, here.
Are we on school property or not?
Are we ready?
Where is the retreat?
Mr. Braverman's absent. Mr. Chiarella?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Here.
Mr. Leary. Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Masters?
Here.
Mr. Tesler?
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Here.
Mr. Board President?
I'm here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, statement for Board of Education. President, in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Public Opus Publicis Meeting Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof posted February 11, 2011, one at all schools, two at Home News Tribune, three at Grand River Press, and four filed with the Clerk of each municipality. Item number five, student board members' report.
Good evening. To start off, for Barclaybrook Elementary School, there will be kindergarten registration for last names N through R at 1:00 p.m., for last names S through Z. Barclaybrook's PTA school store will be held on Wednesday, March 2. Family Reading Night will be at Barclaybrook at 6:00 p.m. on March 4, and the PTA is holding a variety show at Monroe Township High School on March 5. Tomorrow night is Monroe Township's district choral concert at Woodland Elementary School, and at Woodland, Mellett PTO will be holding its PTO meeting on Thursday, March 3, at 7:30 p.m. And for Oak Tree, this Thursday, this Friday, excuse me, there is a PTA-sponsored assembly at Oak Tree for grades 5 through 6.
Next Friday, February 25, a day assembly will be held at Oak Tree. This week, Brookside held its jump rope and hoops-for-heart program for all grades. This Friday, Brookside's PTA is holding its cultural fair. From March 1 to March 3, there will be a HESPA testing for grade 11, so there will be delayed opening for grades 9, 10, and 12. The Booster Club meeting will be held at 7:30 p.m. here in the Media Center on March 2. And finally, schools closed for, schools closed on February 21 for President's Day and February 22 for staff in service.
Okay, great. Approval of the minutes, Public Board of Education meeting, January 18, 2011, rescheduled from, I'm sorry? Public forum, I'm sorry. Anyone wishing to speak before the Board, please come up, state your name and address for the record. I didn't skip it, I just anticipated.
That was called.
Good evening, I'm Doug Boy for Tamarack Road. I apologize, I could not attend last month's meeting when there was a presentation on the results of last year's assessment testing. And I think the district can be quite proud of how our students did in the language arts aspect of that performance assessment. However, the results in mathematics, both at grade 8 and at the 11th grade, were, in my opinion, far from satisfactory. And I'm just curious, and if this was covered at the last meeting, then I apologize for not being aware of that, but I'm curious as to what steps are being taken to better prepare those students so that those performances do improve. And the other question, I noticed in looking at the results for the Jamesburg 8th grade, their 8th grade mathematics, as well as their language arts, were considerably low compared to Monroe, and they are ascending district. Therefore, I was curious as to what our district might be doing to coordinate or work with the Jamesburg school system so that the students coming into the high school are better prepared. I think it's to the benefit of those students, as well as to the benefit of our district, since those students' results do appear in the 11th grade assessment.
Okay, I'll take that. Thank you for your question, Mr. Boy, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
We actually have, Applegarth School is currently on an improvement plan as a result of the 8th grade assessment, and that improvement plan targets very specifically what areas of improvement need to occur. We're looking at student achievement data relative to where students were last year as 7th graders, and to establish what patterns may exist that may help us identify what instructional strategies need to be developed or further embellished, if you will, in order to address that. Moving forward, however, when those youngsters are 9th graders next year, we met as recently as today, as a matter of fact, to look at how we could restructure the math program at the high school, well, at the current high school for the middle school students that will also address that, and that will include some additional strategies for our teachers, some additional professional development, and looking at a way to restructure how classes are addressing the various math needs, including perhaps doubling some of the math periods. At the 11th grade, we just conducted our instructional rounds here at the high school, we just finished up, yes, day before yesterday, we're debriefing the staff tomorrow, and during that debrief, we'll talk about commendable features of the math program, we'll make some recommendations for moving forward, and then we'll talk about next steps when we meet with the staff tomorrow.
Okay.
And regarding Jamesburg, we do have some articulation with Jamesburg. Because we lost our math supervisor last year, it has not happened as consistently as it has previously, but we are working on improving that as well with our math coordinators that were put in place this year.
Thank you for those responses. At last-
Can I just address, add to that, Mr. Boy? We have about 60 kids per grade, so unfortunately, one or two children can skew our numbers severely because we track K to 8, and when we track it, as far as the children going through the district, the numbers are usually higher, but we do, some of the transient population tends to throw the numbers off, but we also address it consistently. And when the kids get up here, they, they are able to integrate quite easily into the programs here, but we monitor it very closely also. But again, as I said, we, since our population is so small, one or two students can throw the numbers off drastically, so.
Yes, I'm aware, you know, how that can be affected there, but thank you. The 11th grade assessment essentially has been given in New Jersey for many, many years. And to still see that the Monroe High School students are scoring in terms of the percent, total percent passing, being less than, less than 80%, I'm just curious, are we really doing things radically different than what we've done in the past? Because if we're not, then we're not going to see the improvements that I would have thought would have already occurred over that long period of testing, because the test hasn't radically changed at the high school level over all that period of time.
Well, the test did change significantly last year, but that, not that that's an excuse, it's an explanation, of course, but the fact of the matter is, we are doing some things that are radical, as are many New Jersey high schools, as a part of the UBD, Understanding by Design work that's been going, that's going on with Grant Wiggins. And we're hoping that that in and of itself will help us restructure the high school, so it's not the traditional high school in that regard, but really changing teaching strategies so that it reflects the higher standards that our students are expected to meet. The other thing that we should begin to see manifest itself at the 11th grade level is the implementation of connected math. Now, the connected math series, next year, you should really see the benefit, we should see the benefit of that program as those youngsters will have progress through the system and have been, had an opportunity to get acclimated to the new math initiative, which is at the elementary and middle school levels.
Okay, fine, thank you. And just one other request, when we get to the business administrators' part of the report, if you could put in layman terms what items, I think it's Q and R, are all about, because I read it and it just, you know, it's way over my head. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. Next item, item number seven.
Approval of the minutes, Public Board of Education meeting, January 18, 2011, which was rescheduled from January 12. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ferroni, Mr. Tesler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Questions?
Next closed session meeting, January 18, which was rescheduled from January 12. Motion?
So moved.
Tesler, Ms. Ferroni. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Questions? Right. Next item, Superintendent's Report.
Enrollment report for the month of January is included on the agenda. Again, you see the difference between last year, January 31 of last year, and this year is 134 students. We are continuing to see an increase in student enrollment at Oak Tree in particular. The enrollment is continuing to grow. We are currently looking at class size projections for next year at Oak Tree, and while some of the other schools are growing, they certainly are not growing at that rate, many of them are pretty stable. Oak Tree continues to be a concern in terms of student enrollment there. The out-of-district placement reports are also included. The numbers are the same from last month to this month, there's been no change. And home instruction, that report is slightly different. We were able to return some of those students off of home instruction. Most of them are bedridden or have some medical condition that warrants homebound instruction. The fire drill is listed on the agenda, there are, the fire drills and the lockdown drills are included there for your review. Moving on to the personnel report. Items A through Z, Mr. President, and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that personnel items A through Z be approved by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Koloponowicz? Local?
Questions?
No questions?
I had a question about the fire drills. I noticed some schools had two and others had one. Has the state ever figured out whether we need two plus a lockdown or one and a lockdown?
It is one plus the lockdown, that's all our chief here in town requires. Some principals have elected to continue to do the two.
Thank you.
Also, when we get to enrollment, Monroe High School, we showed plus three, in reality it's minus 12. There's a misprint.
High School?
They went from 1661 to 1649.
That was correct. I'll have that corrected for the next. Any other questions? Roll call. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, personnel items A to Z passes.
Mr. President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Board action items A through L be approved by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Questions? That's, roll call? Yes. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, Board action items A through L passes.
Mrs. Leonard, were those questions sufficiently answered for you?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Right. Business Administrator's Report.
Mr. Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Board action items A through P be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Mr. Tesler? Questions, comments? Yes. Those are Q and R, it'll come next. Any other questions? Roll call. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, Board action items A through P passes.
And if I may take a moment to discuss items Q and R.
Sure.
As part of the budget process this year, the district reviewed the outstanding debt schedules, and I solicited some work from our financial advisor. And in the current interest rate environment, it has been determined that if we re-refinance, and I say that word because we refinanced the 2002 bonds in 2002, obviously, but rates are favorable enough now that we can refinance them again. And depending on the exact interest rates, when the bonds are sold, it could save the district and the neighborhood of $850,000 to $1 million over the duration of the bonds. So that, that refers to item Q. And R, Q is a resolution to go before the local finance board, which is required for such a refinancing. And R is the first reading and adoption. The second will occur on March 23 meeting.
Okay, so you want to read them independently?
Independently.
Okay.
And our bond counselor is present today, Mr. Jackie Shanis, if anybody would like any further explanation. First is item Q. Mr. Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Board action item Q, which reads "Resolution Making Application to Local Finance Board," be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Mr. Leonard, second. Mr. Chiarella? Questions? Roll call. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni? Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz? She stepped out. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, item Q passes.
Mr. Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Board action item R, which reads "Resolution Refunding Bond Ordinance of the Board of Education," be approved by consent roll call. This is the first reading, there will be a final reading and adoption at the March 23 meeting.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Klein? Questions? Roll call. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni? Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, item R passes. Right.
That concludes the Business Administrator's Report.
Right. Next item is the Board President's Report. I don't really have anything that I need to speak to. I know everybody has committees that have been going on, so I'm just going to move right into committees' reports. Item number 10, committee reports, anyone? Mr. Tesler?
Sure.
Thank you, Ken. February 10, we had a curriculum committee meeting. Three topics were discussed. Topic number one is a refinement to the adult education program. In addition to our courses we currently offer, we're going to be offering online courses by using a service called Ed2Go. There'll be web-based classes, they're not self-study, they are instructor-led classes, and they offer a wide range of courses, and we'll probably be offering a subset of 128, 100 to 128 courses to whoever would like to take them. Nice thing about it is there are no startup costs to the district. They'll provide us their own branded website, if we like, with our Monroe logo on it. And basically, people can sign up for the classes online, put in their credit card, and we'll make a markup, so it's kind of a win-win. People get to take more courses, which we can't currently offer here, and we make some money on them with no cost to us. And that service is Ed2Go, and you can Google it, and you can actually go and see their costs offering online today. We had a little technology update. Our contract with Verizon Internet Service is up this year, and Comcast has offered us a contract going, basically increasing our bandwidth tenfold for half the cost. So that's kind of a no-brainer there. So when the new high school opens, our bandwidth, coming into the district, our internet bandwidth, we're going from 10 megabytes to 100 megabytes at half the price. Next subject is, we just got to look at some new football uniforms, some new coloring. I'm probably colorblind, I am colorblind, so I'm probably the worst person to look at that, but we all approved and liked the new colors for the uniform. And the last topic, last topic was summer math. Currently, we have summer reading, but we do not have any type of summer math that gets sent home for the children to do to keep up on their math skills. So a proposal was introduced by Mr. Faro over at Applegarth, and, for approval, and we'll be, in, in certain grades, we'll be giving home summer math packets that the kids will be required to do and turn in, and they will be graded in the beginning of the year, just like we do summer reading. We got some samples of the packets and letters that will be going home over the summer to the students, and if you'd like to see that, I'm sure you can drop an email to Mr. Faro, they were handed out in our curriculum meeting, and it probably can be provided as part of one of our packets home. But these summer packets will be distributed at the end of the school year and also be available on the website, so in case the kids, like mine, probably will lose them by the time August comes around when they need to do them, they'll be available for them to download as well. And we also addressed some other subjects that we'll be looking into further, that if the children have any questions or things like that over the summer, for some extra help or on that too, so that's kind of still in the works. But in addition to summer reading, I think a summer math would be a great addition to keep the kids up in their math skills. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tesler. Anyone else? Ms. Leonard?
Unfortunately, I had car trouble and couldn't make the curriculum meeting. But I did have some questions about the math project, can I ask them?
Sure.
The-
Go on.
The grading of them, how will they be graded? How will they affect their first marking period grade? I think it's a really good idea, but I'm on the fence of having somebody come in with an F if they didn't do it right from day one.
They will be graded, they will be weighted in the same way that the summer reading packet will be graded, and to the extent that there will be a test given similar to the summer reading package that teachers would be required to grade and give students feedback on. And the thinking on that is, if the teachers aren't going to invest the time into grading the packet, what would be the incentive for kids to do it? So that's as far as we got in that discussion. Actually, we have a few more protocols that we need to establish in terms of how we communicate that out to parents.
And will this be project-based or worksheet-type?
A combination of the two.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, I know my kids, if there's not a grade involved, or if you say it's optional, they won't do it, so you have to-
Oh, I-
You have to give the kids incentives or some, some way of, you know, doing it for a grade.
I agree, and, but I just, you know, I feel for the kid who doesn't have the strong parent that says, "You got to get this done, it's time to do this," that they already come in, they're at, they're at a detriment to begin with without strong parental support, and then we're going to give them an F to start with because they don't get this done. Where is their incentive then to work from September 2? You know, it's, like I said, I'm for it, and I agree, and it has to be graded, but there's that other part of me too, that for the students who don't have the parent saying, you know, "This is August, let's download it, let's get it done, let's put it in your book bag, let's, let's get it in there."
Well, we've been talking about having several methods of support available for youngsters, including a call-in procedure if they needed to get help. So in addition to keeping kids up to date on their math skills, that they don't lose that information over the summer, we also want youngsters to begin to take greater responsibility for their own learning. And if we have the support systems in place for them so that it is essentially failure-free, then the expectation is that they'll take advantage of those resources.
Okay, and, and that's, I guess, what I'm looking for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Another Board of Education, business? Yes.
Go ahead. I cut you off.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Okay. Follow-up from the last meeting. As I announced at the last meeting, I sent a letter to, is there an echo in here?
Only on you, Mark.
Burman does it all the time. Anyway, I sent a letter to Chief Justice Rabner concerning our problems, along with the Acting Commissioner of the Department of Education. I'm happy to say I did get a call yesterday. Dr. Hamilton knows about it. Her name is Cynthia, I could not make out her last name, and thank God for this, because I have the phone number to bug her now if she doesn't call me. And again, as we all know, it's about the amount of money that we get, or the money we're not getting. So I just wanted to update you on that. The second thing is, and I made copies of this newspaper article that I dropped off for everybody. It seems, and this has been going on for months now, the Superintendent of Piscataway and the Superintendent of Woodbridge have been complaining about their cuts, and in all the newspapers, that they felt the cuts were unfair. And then I see on here, with Piscataway, Piscataway has a budget of $100 million, similar to us. They were receiving $17 million. We were receiving about $4 million by the time they beat us out of the $500,000 every year for the last two years. Piscataway's complaining they got caught, they got cut to $14 million, 12 or 14 million, I got to read it on here, let me see, 12 million. They got cut to 12 million. And that's a hardship for them, you understand? We're down to $236,000, and that's not a hardship? Now, according to this article, and you read it, the State Supreme Court ordered the hearing in January. It will end March 31. Why aren't we involved? Why can't we contact the judge that is listening? I think he's in the appellate division? That is listening to this case, and he has to make the decision on whether financing should be changed, and whether the inner city should get more of their money back. I mean, you had Perth Amboy receiving $144 million, and they were cut by 4%. I mean, the whole thing is unfair. Why? I think it's time that we contact this judge and find out whether we can have a hearing with him to let him know firsthand what we're going through here. Because I'll be very honest with you, and we only have a few of the parents here, if I had to vote today on opening up the new high school, I'd vote against it, on the premise that we cannot afford it until the state gives us what we are entitled to. And not that we go to our residents to keep raising taxes to keep our system going. If this school board, if this district was a private corporation, the union would have forced us out of business six years ago, eight years ago. We cannot go to the residents for more money. We must do everything in our power. I have tried it. I've been working on this, God, since last year. We now have to get involved with this judge to hear our side of the story. Piscataway's doing one hell of a job. Woodbridge is doing one hell of a job. I don't think we are. And I think this is the opportunity for us to step forward and get it in the paper. I know we have somebody here from one of the newspapers, and now start to spread word, "We're not going to stay with $236,000." That's it, thank you.
Mr. Klein, I just want to respond to one of your, one of your questions. Monroe was not, we explored whether or not we would be able to be a part of a lawsuit similar to that filed by Piscataway and Woodbridge.
Right.
And we were not deemed to be viable plaintiffs in that case because of the fact that when we suffered our cuts last year, we were very careful not to have the kind of impact on instructional programs that some of the other districts like Piscataway and Woodbridge suffered. For instance, we did not have the massive cuts in personnel that they had, we did not increase class size, we didn't cut our art and music programs to the extent that other places did. So after exploring that, it was not deemed that we would be a viable plaintiff that would help charge, be a part of that charge to the state to seek reinstatement of that aid. Now, of course, if there is a lawsuit filed, and it is a successful lawsuit, we would still be the beneficiaries of that, that decision, but we were not deemed to be viable candidates for that lawsuit.
Okay, now, what this is, this is not a lawsuit. This was a request by the New Jer- This was a request by the New Jersey Supreme Court for this judge to have hearings on, I don't know how many districts are involved, all it seems to be in this, or the two. There's got to be more. So it's not a lawsuit. The Supreme Court is asking this justice to come up with a determination whether certain districts are losing, how would you put it, programs, the students are suffering. You know, do we have to make the students suffer before we get any movement?
Unfortunately, that's what the...
Do we have to fire 300 teachers or drop every special ed program we have, or every tag program we have? Is that what the state wants? I say not. I say that we get in touch with this judge and find that if he's willing to hear the story that we have to tell. And what gets me is, here you've got Piscataway, and they can stand on their head when they tell us we're a wealthy area. You've got 50 or 55% of the people here are retired people. East Brunswick gets more than we do. I lived in East Brunswick. And you've got a lot more wealthier people there, and they're getting a hell of a lot more money than we get. And what I'm saying is, this whole, the formula is wrong, the whole system stinks, and if we sit back and we just keep giving and giving and just go to the residents and say, "Okay, residents, we're going to raise you X amount of dollars." We already know what medical went up. Medical went up 17%. By the way, in today's paper, no, no, shut up. In today's paper, there's an article that the state wants to go after the state employees earning $100,000 or more and charge them 30% of their medical insurance. Their insurance is somewhere around $30,000. That's $9,000. Remember what I said, and we're not going to discuss it here, you know what my idea was on that, and it proves that I'm not far off. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Tesler?
I think you really followed up. I just wanted to let the Board of Education know that on March 19, the Monroe Ed Foundation will be hosting a fundraiser. It'll be a basketball game. It'll be the teachers versus the police department. The basketball game will be played right here at the gym. Admission is $5, so just come out and root for your favorite teacher or police officer and have a lot of fun. Thank you.
Police officers give tickets? I'm going to root for the police officers.
Anyone else? We need to make a couple of date changes on some upcoming board meetings. It is recommended that the Monroe Township Board of Education cancel the public board of education meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March 9, 2011, at 7:00, and reschedule the meeting for Thursday, March 3, at 7:00 PM due to timelines necessary to follow for the submission of the 2011-2012 budget to the county.
Still moved.
Second.
Klein, discussion?
Just so I'm clear, it was the first, but now it's the third? It was the ninth or the first?
Yes.
Okay.
The third.
It's the third now.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarala? Mrs. Koloponowicz? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
It is also recommended that the Board of Education approve a board retreat to be held on Saturday, February 26, at 9:00 AM at the Monroe Township High School to discuss the district's goal, mission, and vision statement.
Still moved.
Leonard?
Second.
Klein, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarala? Mrs. Koloponowicz? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Masters? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Any other Board of Education business? Item number 12, closed session resolution be resolved at the Board of Education at Township Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231, of the public laws of 1975 and JSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21 to discuss the following subjects: negotiations, update. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved.
Second.
I'm going to have to give it to... Kathy K. Kathy K and Kathy B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? Be back. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're going to continue to move forward. Item 13, public forum. Anyone wishing to speak before the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
I'm going to be very nice. Jennifer Marcus, 24 Carnation Road. And I always tell everybody, I sold my house in Monroe Manor. I'm building a house in Southfield so that I could remain within the Oak Tree area. That being said, I understand everything going on with building and development and everything, and my question is about zoning, that in Monroe Manor, I'm still there right now, and I see just houses coming up and coming up and coming up. And my question is, what can we do in terms of township? Why does the township keep getting permits to be building when our school system can't accommodate what's coming up? I mean, I saw one house that they broke ground for right on the corner where I don't even think it was a lot, and they kind of angled the house and stuck it there. And I just, I don't know how the school is going to, you know, compensate for that. And it just seems like the builders, I'm just, I know I'm in the wrong place. I know I should be zoning and planning.
You're in the right place.
And that's why I'm asking, where can I go? Who can I talk to? And how come I'm the only one, is my other question?
I'll just respond, and then I'll give it over to Mr. Klein, because I know he's just eagerly waiting to respond.
And why am I the only one that asks this question?
He just gave me $10 for that question.
Right. I'm surprised he's even letting me talk right now. It's a fabulous question. It just happens to be the wrong venue.
Right.
It's obviously the municipality.
Right.
We have to react. Our ability to be proactive in a lot of this stuff is fairly well-limited, okay? Houses can go up, you know, people have the right to buy land, develop it if it's within the, you know, the zoning to allow that to happen, so...
But why is it continuing when we're seeing, you know, we're looking at the numbers at Oak Tree, and we're saying they're just going up and up and up and up, and there's just more and more houses going up and up? Why are they, why are we still putting up houses and still bringing kids in when we're at capacity?
Because builders can. There's nothing to stop them.
Is there anything, can you get, like, zoning, I don't know what it's called, that you have to have a minimum amount of land in order to put a house on it? Like, is that something that's...
It's all based on, I know Mark is like, please, please, please let me answer, right?
Foaming at the mouth to talk to me.
I know a lot of it's based on the master plan, and every part of town is zoned for a certain amount of clusters and how many homes you could put in certain, you know, lots and blocks.
But how come the builders don't have to...
I thought Monroe did increase the size of the lots.
You can't.
No, they're very small lots that are going out there.
Going to Mount Laurel, you're not allowed.
Yeah, and there's condos coming up, there's court homes coming in there, and I don't know how Oak Tree, I mean, you know, I've been following the whole thing since the fall, so I don't know how Oak Tree is supposed to come up with a room for these kids who are coming in in droves, and I don't understand why the builders, or, I mean, I don't know what's going on in terms of future. I know I can look it up and find out what's coming in, but how come it's continuing to happen when we have a problem with schools?
I'll do this for you. I will let Mark speak, but I'm going to tell Mark that he's got three minutes to respond because I know you're in his wheelhouse right now. And Mark, if you wouldn't mind...
Try to make it as fast as possible. First of all, you want to voice that at a town council meeting. You should attend a planning board meeting. Bring that up at a planning board meeting. Now, just to give you a fast background.
Yes.
We've been fortunate here that probably the last 12 to 15 years, the bulk of your new building were over 55 communities, of which I live in one. So here you have a large influx of tax dollars coming in, no children going into the schools. Well, that market is drying up, and the legislature, the state legislature passed a law, I believe it was either 2010 or 2009, that any developer that had gotten approval for an over 55 community and did not take a deposit has a right to apply to the zoning board to have it rezoned to family community as compared to age-restricted. So that's number one. Number two, as far as the builders, I agree with you 900%. We have no choice. If an area is zoned residential, it could be residential for a quarter of an acre, so minimum lots, quarter of an acre. It could be half acre, it could be an acre. If it's residential, then they apply to the planning board with a site plan, and there really is nothing you can do about it. It's when they look for a variance to take it from, let's say, light industrial to make it residential, then we have control over it. But this is something I've been complaining about all along, is if we, if the enrollment grows so much, and people complained about, like in my development, about the high school, they think it's so big. Man, we're going to be, that's going to be outgrown probably by 2015, 2016, and the people don't understand that. If we had the money coming in from the state, it makes it a lot easier to expand the schools, and probably that would have to happen somewhere up the road. But you and other people like yourself have to voice your opinion at the council meetings, which I believe is the first Monday of every month.
Look on the website for zoning and planning and...
And then, I'm on the zoning board.
And I didn't know if it was zoning or planning, so I didn't know.
No, you have two different ones. If they need a variance to do something, then they apply to the zoning board. If they're building within what the area states the zoning is, then they go right to the planning board. My suggestion to you is, the planning board and the town council, voice your opinions, and the more of you that complain, they will react. Thank you.
I just, and I just want to say on a side note, years ago, you were able to request the construction company that was building the development...
Right.
...give money to offset the impact on the school district, but then they deemed that illegal.
Yeah, you can't do that anymore.
You can't do that. They made, they deemed it illegal.
One fast point, and I'm, I'll shut up.
Which was a great incentive.
This one you're going to look. Mount Laurel was for affordable housing, and that's where they went into towns like East Brunswick and Sedna. You no longer can have minimum three-quarters of an acre. We want cluster housing, and it created overcrowding. Well, Mount Laurel was supposed to be changed, and I was at the Affordable Housing Committee in Monroe Township a few months ago, and they had a developer there, and he was bragging that he was going to build 100 affordable apartments for families, for families, that the township would get $71,000 in property taxes. Now, let's think, 100 families at $71,000 is $710 a year. And then he brags, now, these are families. We're not talking retirement people. We're not talking anything other than families. Then he brags it, and nothing will be paid towards the Board of Education. So they're going to bring in possibly two children per unit, is 200 kids, and pay nothing towards the education, and he was bragging about it, and it's a developer who has built these type developments in other places in New Jersey. That was voted down by the committee, and I also spoke up at the committee. So please, get yourself active. When they talk about the affordable housing, get there and talk. That's all I can say. Thank you. Thank you for the time, Mr. President. Sir.
No problem, Mark.
Great guy, nice person.
And Mark will be giving municipal education lessons.
Seminar.
Wait, that's for three years.
Anyone else wishing to speak before the board? Okay, seeing no one. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on March 3 at 7:00 PM at the high school. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.